Said something. Okay, it's nine o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Cottonton County Commissioners to order. If you'd please rise, I'll have Commissioner Waterman lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Hey, item two is call for public comment. If anybody has public comment, they can do it in person or they can use the telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cell phone, could you please silence it? And if you need to take a call, you could please step out in the hall. Thank you. Item three, is there any conflict of interests?
Oh, no.
No.
Item four, we need a motion to approve the June eighteenth agenda. Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, need a motion to approve the June eleventh minutes of the
Target.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman, to approve the minutes of the June eleventh meeting. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Item six, action to authorize to advertise a notice for bidders for County Road Twenty Project. Rick and Waylon.
Morning, Waylon.
Good morning.
Morning, Waylon.
How are you guys today?
Good. About health with you today, huh?
I don't have a copy of the advertising, Brenda.
Yeah, I didn't, I was, I apologize. It was on another job, so I didn't print it off either.
What's, what's our visitor's name back there?
Sure, so. What's her name?
Edie. Hi, Edie. Thanks for coming today.
Yeah, thanks for showing up at a meeting.
We appreciate that. So what grade are you at?
So I think.
Oh, you're a kindergarten. Oh, boy.
Starting government early.
That's right. We need that.
Yeah.
And it's on the straight and narrow.
Now, this is the
Self down.
The two miles, that two miles west of eighty-one.
Correct. Yep. This has been on a five year plan for a lot of five years.
Oh, it's, it's, it's from the corner. The Bemis goes east. This is connects the Foley Road in eighty-one.
Okay. I got you.
And that's two miles.
Yes, it's two miles.
They're going.
Yes, they call it.
Do you have a computer? And I assume.
I think everybody's, Charlie, oh, yeah. One more. Now we're good. They're good now. Everybody's got it.
Thank you, Brenda. You want me to go?
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, so I guess the, the item in front of us here is, is the advertisement for bids. The notice to bidders to submit bids for the Cottonton County Road Twenty reconstruction project. This is one that we've been working with Rick on for a while here. So Cottonton County Road Twenty, it's the two miles west of Highway eighty-one that are currently gravel that connect Highway eighty-one with County Road. What's kind of on less than eleven? There you go. And so the, the, the goal, ultimate goal for this project is that that two mile stretch will end up, you know, being a paved road at some point in time. And so in order to accommodate that, the existing gravel surface, A, you know, wouldn't meet a paved road design criteria standard for a, for, for a fifty-five mile an hour roadway. And then, so geometrically, you know, it would have some insufficiencies. And then, and then secondarily, the width of that, in order to actually pave two lanes on it, if you think about a gravel road, I'm gonna turn it into a paved road and, and paving two lanes on it, striping that, it's, it's not quite wide enough for that. And so this project is, as you can see, is part of the bid, you know, X giving undercutting that roadway in order to get to a grade line in which, in which we can lengthen some of the vertical curves, extend them out. So the site distances are adequate and, and meet design criteria for a fifty-five mile an hour road. And that also incorporates adding about eight thousand cubic yards of contractor furnished borrow in order to do that as well. So the, 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 the road itself will be gravel surfaced at the end of this project, and then a future project would, would pave that. That gravel surface roadway will be just about thirty feet on the top width. And then, of course, if you think about adding four inches of pavement and, and tapering those in at a four to one, just like the roadway and slope, that would bring us to fourteen feet on each side of center line, thirteen of that asphalt, and then one foot of gravel shoulder. Obviously, you get to hold that asphalt in place, and then the, the, the lanes would be striped at twelve feet, which, you know, is, is fairly standard for, for county highways. So, so this, in this project in and of itself, on that road, the county currently has jurisdiction over the statutory right of way, which is the sixty-six total foot and width to thirty-three feet from each side. In order to accommodate, you know, A, adjusting the grade line, and B, you know, widening that roadway subgrade base in order to, to hold a, a future paved road. We are adjusting some of the ditch cuts. So there's areas through there where, where Rick had noted that there is, there's snow drift issues where the, where the snow drifts pretty deep. And so we're trying to incorporate a little bit more ditch there, as well as a flatter back slope out into the, to the adjacent properties and bringing that roadway elevation above the adjacent properties, so it doesn't sit below and blow over and drift in.
That sixty-six feet is at the total width.
Total width of the right of way.
Thirty-three from center line.
Center line, yes. Yep. Thank you for clarifying that. So, or go ahead.
Do we, is there spots we need more than that to make that work?
Yes, so that's my next thing. So, so, so really, in order to do that, the, the grading limits extend outside of that sixty-six foot right of way. So we have met with all of the landowners along the project, showed them the intentions of the projects, as well as the impacts to their properties. They have all provided verbal concurrence with the, with the design and, and impacts. So then we followed up with an actual easement document. So a temporary easement document, it was derived from the Department of Transportation's Local Government Assistance Office documents for temporary easements for county. It, it, it's used for local entities, but the DFT kind of provides that.
Nice.
We have received out of the nine parcels that are along there, we've received five of those back and have contacted the other four, and they've indicated their intent to sign and send them back here.
Super.
Yeah.
But
Makes it easy.
Yes.
Easier.
Yes, and so the landowners have, have, have been great to work with on that. And so those easements, of course, contain the grading limits plus an additional distance off the edge of those grading limits for construction purposes. You know, a lot of times it helps with efficiency. One thing the landowners actually wanted that for was because many of them wanted their own topsoil back on their ground, right? And so if we pick up all the topsoil and haul it to a big stockpile and then have to haul it back and dump it, it's, it's a big mixed bag. Whereas by allotting that extra ten to fifteen feet off of the grading limits, that topsoil can be pushed and stockpiled in that grading or in that easement area and then, and then pulled back into the ditch. So the ditch back slopes will not be your typical, what they call five to one or five foot horizontal and, and one foot vertical. They're actually flattened out to eight foot horizontal, one foot vertical. And the purpose for that is because since they encroach onto the property and much of that property is agricultural land, that's still able to be farmed. Whereas if, if you went with a steeper back slope, it wouldn't have as much impact. But the area that it does impact, they're unable to really get any future production out of that. And so that, that part was, was considered and discussed with the landowners as well in order to ensure that they can get the full production of, all the way up to that right of way line.
Is that gonna, is that gonna affect any holding of water? It won't affect any water run.
So we're, we're replacing all of the, all of the pipe culverts and, and then the box over structure on the project. And we have, we have gone through and, and vetted, you know, what the, what the elevations of the channels entering the right of way and exiting the right of way and, and set the, set the inverts accordingly. You know, there has been some incorporation of some drain tile in that area, and so that is something that we have, have worked with the landowners and, and tried to get whatever they have for maps of drain tile, because obviously the elevations of those discharge points sometimes don't match up with the, with the culvert, right? And so, and so trying to coordinate that. But nonetheless, the Corps of Engineers also would require on the major waterways to countersink the, countersink the culverts, and so that will be done also. And then they, the intent of that is they naturally fill in, and then any sort of aquatic species, whether it's topica shiners or turtles or, or, or carp, I guess, that find their way into every waterway that they can pass through without getting caught up by the bike crossings. So.
Are there any fences?
There is existing fence. We, we spoke to each landowner that has existing fence along there. We will remove all of the fence, and then we, there are just a couple of short sections that the landowners along there care to have back. There's a couple properties that, that are used for, that are pasture, that are used for running animals. Anywhere that they set up their own temporary fence, you know, to, to fence in their corn stocks for their, for their livestock or animals to eat on, we wouldn't provide an actual physical fence there. So, so yes, there, there is a little bit of fence that goes back. But actually, for the most part, they don't, most of those landowners would rather see it out of there.
Sounds like a good project. It's gonna clean it up in quite a bit.
It should make it a lot nicer than, if Randy, Randy uses that road, he knows what, what it's like.
Yeah.
It, it's all overdue.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of low spot. I mean, there is this low ground, and I know the area that you're talking, that's been tiled, which is good for the landowner, but we still gotta get rid of the water, because, you know. Yeah, was there ever been like a hound on that road? I know that road gets used a lot from eighty-one to
That, I'm not sure what the count is, so.
I mean, because for a while, if that road was in bad shape, which it has in the past few years, they would take that township road a mile north. And a lot of traffic was getting used on that road. So I think it's a good purpose that if we can get this project done.
And it'll, it'll help us in snow riding. Because currently, in the wintertime, years ago, they, they never would go up that with a truck. They'd always take eighty-one from town and go down to County Road Twenty. So I started implementing, you know, take County Road eleven down and then going across those two miles of gravel. But it gets so bad that the truck couldn't get through it. And then if it warmed up, the truck, I wouldn't let the truck go down it, because he'd leave ruts in it. So it's gonna, it's gonna be good in the long run.
But the conclusion of this, it will be gravel.
The, the end of this project will be gravel.
Yep. And then next year.
Yeah, run it wild gravel year, get a good foot.
Yep. That's, that's what the plan is, to pave it next year.
So the paving will come for probably the top, three, four years, three years, one year, okay?
One year.
I was just giving you a little edge there.
That's, that's what the plan is in the budget, to pave it next year.
All right.
And, and waiting that year with the freezing thaw, that's enough to make that settle? I mean, I'm not an engineer. I'm just asking the question to make sure the dirt's all
Sure.
Where it's supposed to be.
Yes, so, so that, that one freeze saw cycle, obviously, there, there's, there's short term settlement or short term consolidation, which is where a majority of the settlement takes place. And then there's always the chance for longer term consolidation and settlement. The amount of, of material that'll be moved around and graded in and out that, that one year, as well as the replacement of the pipes. That one year is consistent with an industry standard as far as allowing that to go through a freeze saw cycle and settle out would be consistent with, like what the Department of Transportation would do with their state highways as well. So obviously, if you could let it go, you know, year in and year out. So the benefits are you allow some of that settlement to continue. Some of the drawbacks are you continue to allow the opportunity for the grade to get moisture introduced into it. And then if you have a couple of wet years, and then you want to try to pave it the following year, you may have a, a subgrade that's holding a lot of moisture, and it, it proves to be a little bit less stable under the paving operation. So it, you know, if you had a crystal ball, you know, you could say, let's find a dry fall and then pave it the next spring. But it's, it's
We don't know what next year's gonna bring.
So.
We don't know what next week's gonna bring.
But that's a, that's a very good question. Actually, that's what I was telling Rick, is it, it's a good thing it's not sitting out there opened up, you know, this week, because it would be awfully wet and sitting there for a while trying to dry out. But nonetheless.
I hope it's to get it done this summer.
Yeah, well, this summer and the fall.
Yeah.
Because there's a completion date of like the first, around the first of November or something like that.
Yep.
I didn't see that, is it in here?
It's, it's not on this sheet, so it will be part of the, the contract documents. That's part of a project manual. So this is just the advertisement that will go in the newspaper. The, the full project manual, you know, will contain the completion dates, as well as the, the requirements of the project and, and that sort of stuff. One thing I do want to note as well is on this project, we do have two bid alternatives. One of them is separator fabric and base course, and the other is, is the cement treated subgrade. What, the, the difference between those two and, and, and a little bit of a difference between like this project and, and, and the one we just recently bid out at the county is because we're building the roadway up, the cement treated subgrade option requires more fill, because you're using a smaller section of base course. The, the geotech and, and that, that took the soil borings on the project did indicate, you know, that they felt like that was a, a good alternative as far as constructability of it, especially if we're gonna utilize onsite materials to help build the roadway up as much as possible and then importing other materials. So those are two, the two bid alternatives to give the county a couple of options of how they would want us to proceed forward with that.
Did you mention what date bid opening will be?
I did not. The bid opening is scheduled for Tuesday, July ninth, here at the, the commission meeting, nine AM.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Then we proceed with authorizing the advertising for bids for this project.
Motion by Johnson.
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Gable. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care of that helper.
Yeah, you, you might as well stay here, Rick.
Okay.
Yep. As your next on the month report.
Thanks.
Thanks, Waylon. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Take care of that helper.
Well, the first thing I want to do is ask you guys to quit asking for rain, because that's messing with everything. I know I'm not the only one. The farmers are having a hard time. We're struggling. You know, we, we started our chip seal last week. We've shot off one tanker of oil.
Yeah.
You know. It, it's just, it's a struggle right now, you know. Looks like it's gonna rain, but keep your fingers crossed. And that's, we, we're as far away from Watertown as we could possibly get. We're up north of Wallace right now. And we are stockpiling P rock and, and like you said, we got one tanker shot off. Didn't get any shot off yesterday. So that's, that's what we're doing. The guys are hauling P rock right now. Also, I just came from the project that was supposed to get done last year, the paving project north of Tinker Town would be on County Road Twenty-three. So that money from last year will have to get put back into my budget for this year. And they're out there right now. Our guy shaped it this morning, packed it, and hopefully asphalt is showing up as we speak. Because it was supposed to be there yesterday, and we got out there and it was raining. And if we didn't know in this morning what we knew yesterday, we'd had a layer of asphalt through there. But hopefully it gets done today. The blade guys have been able to use some of the moisture for shaping up the county roads. Mark Yonker with Banner and Associates is started bridge inspection today. Our mowers, beans were wet, they've started doing the top cut. Usually, we wait until around the Fourth of July. But we've started the top cut, because we had to do some where we're gonna chip seal. So they've started that. We've been working with the township to get what structures, the state changed the program for the Rafe to include minimal maintenance roads. They have to have some kind of maintenance on it. It can't be just no maintenance at all. So there's a few structures that have been added, and our guy is making phone calls right now to get the rest of them done. We have most of them. There's just a couple of townships that we're waiting on to see if they have any. And we've already inventoried some more. But that's what the program is on that.
When you say from no maintenance to some maintenance.
The blades gotta go down it.
What do you?
The blades gotta go down at, at least a couple of times a year. We get out there, it's just a grass path. That's no maintenance.
Minimum maintenance.
Yeah, and these are on minimum maintenance roads. So.
We don't have to worry about culverts or anything like that, if there might be something in there to wait.
That's, that's what we're doing, is inventorying the culverts for the townships.
Okay.
Yep. And they're the ones that maintain the roads and stuff. And to get the culverts into the state program, like I said, there has to be some kind of maintenance on that road. It can't be a no maintenance road. So.
That makes sense.
Because some of the roads that are minimal maintenance, the only person that uses it is some of the farmers.
Yeah.
Yep. But they changed that in the legislature this year, so we're upgrading all of our townships. You know, there are some townships that didn't have any on the minimum maintenance, and we've already done a few that had some. It's just a few.
Yeah.
But that's what we're working on right now. So.
How many funds do we have to change?
We don't have to change any.
Townships have to change?
Yeah, because we're, like I said, we're just inventorying.
You're just doing some.
Yep, just like what we did before.
Yep.
We're inventorying what the townships take us to. And so they can get put on the website. That way they'll be eligible for funding down the road.
What's the deadline that they need to, that those structures need to be added by?
I think it's the end of June, so we're
Coming right up on it.
And I, we started this a couple of months ago, and I'm waiting patiently. And I know some of these guys, the weather's been messing with them too, so, but we've only got a few left. So that's all I have, unless you guys have some questions for me.
Nope.
Oh.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I'll look at that up there on County Road Two.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your help earlier this week with that other issue.
Yeah, no problem.
Hey, Steve, if you want to come up.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning. All right, I guess I'll start out with egg building. We met, I met with Johnson Controls and a contractor on the installation of the fire suppression system. Some preliminary work will occur prior to the construction phase, which is set to begin about the first part of October. Part of the prior stuff and so that is actually is changing the, on the intake where the water comes in, it's putting basically joint, a union joint in there, so that each system can be functionable. The government, I'm gonna join the government building and the detention center. Contractors are progressing very well on the cooling system, the V H VAC project in the courthouse and detention center. They are estimating the start of the cooling in the detention center portion of the building at the end of the week or beginning of next week. There is scheduled to be a crane on site tomorrow. While the county and state offices are closed to install the fans in the little building on top of the detention center. So.
Good, good planning.
Go on to the park. We planted seventeen deciduous trees at the park, and of course, three of them here at the courthouse, which were donated by Terex. And then they came from the NRCS office. As of yesterday, there's eight hundred and eighty-seven online, hundred and seventeen offline reservations with a total of nine hundred and nineteen that have been made so far with a total of eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars of reservation sales, seven hundred and eight dollars of point of sales, as of, of course, I said yesterday. Firewood, the firewood out there is a little bit too wet. It can't dry up enough, and we don't have it covered out in the back where it's stockpiled. So I might be looking at probably getting some firewood in just from some other source right now to supplement for some usage out there. The weed department, weed spraying is progressing okay besides all the windy and rainy days. But, you know, it, it's going all right. And so that, I think we're gonna have a little chance again tomorrow. It's supposed to be fairly calm and again and stuff, so, and not so much chance of rain. The annual spring, the good, the bad, and the similar weed identification tour was held near S line on June twelfth with around twenty-five individuals attending this event. This is probably the lowest attendees that we've had. We've had up to almost ninety-some attendees for this functions. I think it was just because the weather actually was good, and a lot of people had other things to get going. Leafy Spurge Beetle Collection will possibly occur probably next week. I know we're getting reports that they're out down by Sioux Falls area pretty heavy already. I haven't been out to be able to check. Of course, it takes nice sunny warm weather for, to go check those little guys to see if they're out. But that is probably about right now is the plan. West Nile, we'll be doing some mosquito fogging next week prior to some four H, or Fourth of July activities for a couple of the communities that have requested to be fogged and so that. As far as mosquitoes right now, I just got a report from the, from Watertown for City Park and Memorial Park. The mosquito population is not very high at Memorial Park, but it is up there enough, almost close to almost triggering to be fogged. And so that, so especially the Culex actually are out a little bit earlier. So, which is kind of surprising me, because I figure with all this moisture, be more the eighties, but the Culex are up there in numbers already. So that probably concludes what I have to report on.
Anybody have any questions for Steve or?
Nope.
All right.
All right. Thank you. You bet.
Okay, move down to number eight. No abatements. Nine.
Claims.
Action to approve claim.
And I put that sheet with all the, the numerous claims that have come in that need to be taken care of that missed the deadline. And then there were a few just from election workers as well. So the, the bigger amount from the two sheets is fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. And then in the election budget would be six hundred, seventy-five dollars for a total of sixty thousand, five hundred, forty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen.
So do.
Second by Gable to approve these claims for payment. Any further discussion?
Said thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars of that was for a new Dodge Torango.
Yes, that was the one vehicle that, that was, that's, yeah, for the sheriff's department. Yep.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I also do have the nine-one-one collections for the month of, they're always behind. I want to make sure, April in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, two dollars and fifty-eight cents, it will be paid to the city of Watertown.
I will be recusing myself.
Thank you.
Loaded approved.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any more questions on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item eleven, personnel changes.
We have a couple of those step increases. You have those in your pocket. Andrew Delgado, who is emergency management. Will go from step three to step four, thirty-seven, seventy-seven an hour. And Sherry Howell, who's the deputy director in the emergency management, will go from step five to step six, thirty-one, seventeen an hour. And these will be effective July first.
Load approved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, travel.
No travel.
No travel requests. Thirteen, uh, public notice of a possible quorum of commissioners.
And Mr. Chairman just uh scheduled the um, the C C J A C meeting for next week, Tuesday evening. In the court, the large, the new uh courtroom in the courthouse, that's at uh five thirty PM, so twenty-fifth of June. Um, five thirty PM.
Where did you say that will be at, Lee? I'm sorry.
In the, in the new courtroom.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other, Myron, you have any?
Well, not till the twenty-sixth. That's a week from this one, do that's that, uh, step maybe first district.
Oh, yep.
Yeah.
Well, that we can mention that.
Next week.
Next week. Okay, uh, item fourteen, is there any old business? Seeing none, is there any new business?
I don't know if this would be the proper time to mention this, but maybe it goes under old. We did conduct our first uh recount. From the twenty-twenty-four primary election for the county commission district two race. And it came out the same as it did on election night, so there are no changes there. Um, I will also be having one this Friday morning for the state's attorney race. Next Monday, the twenty-fifth, is that right? Twenty-fourth for the district uh for senate race. And then that Thursday, the twenty-seventh for the district five house race. So we'll be busy with recounts the next week or two. That's it.
Okay. Okay, um. Seeing no other new business, we'll move to the open, uh. I don't see anyone for public comment. There are no phones. Any commissioner comments?
And Mr. Chairman, just a couple.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Gable.
Um, probably could have said this under older new business, but um, so we we, I think we've um finalized more or less the uh. The floor space programming for jail slash sheriff's office, um, if we, you know, to hopefully take this to the vote in November. So that was yesterday with um, um, meeting with the some of the architects and going through some of the. Um, floor spaces, but especially for the sheriff's office. So again, this is kind of the, the, when they talk about programming, that's figuring out, you know, which rooms and how big they need to be. So the idea is that we wanna get it, you know, we wanna get the right answer, but on the other hand, we don't wanna make it as any bigger than it needs to be because it costs more, so. So working through those issues, I think we're about done with that. Um, and uh, so that's kind of the. The main thing we're gonna be talking about at the commission meeting, I'm sorry, the C C J A C meeting next week. Um, and also hopefully, hopefully we'll be ready to come up with some ballot language that we can recommend um to us as a commission. Um, so that we can get that lined up for the November election. Um, then the other thing is, uh. You, I don't know, I think Sarah, um, Faust has mentioned the reaching rural initiative, initiative, it's kind of a, us, it's a. It's the one thing she got it, she got a grant for and now they're talking about applying for another grant, but essentially, um. It's a, another um program funded by the Department of uh Justice at the federal level. Um, to encourage incarceration alternatives, so people, you know, have have to, trying to reduce the number of people that go to jail or go back to jail. Um, by getting the community fire on all cylinders and helping them, helping folks like that in um a good way. And so that's, they're they're having a couple of events next week. Um, about that, doing it, kind of working on some research, doing a series of interviews. So which are with some county officials, city officials, you know, like the sheriff and and Matt and uh or the city manager, so just to make you guys aware of that. That that's what's going on there. Um, and then on Thursday, there'll be a larger meeting where they they gather a bunch of. Uh, people from the community to try to um. I guess, understand, I should say this, this, I'm sorry, this is this week, so um, to try to gather, uh. Uh, you know, get a sense of where we're going with that, so anyway, I know that didn't, that that's kind of amorphous, but if if some, if you remember the stepping up initiative, which was focused on. Reducing mental health in jails, this is kind of a broader version of that.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Gable.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, there's no other commissioner comments, uh. I have not been aware of any executive session. Um.
I moved to adjourn.
A motion to, or motion by Johnson to adjourn, second by Van Dusen. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries, meaning adjourned.
Thanks, guys.